All right, good evening, everybody. We'll be starting today's ZBA meeting. Seven oh four, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. If we can have a roll call, please.
Yes, Member Madjo? Member Olson?
Present.
Member Christopher?
Yeah.
Member Krowitz, absent. Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Member Guay?
Present.
Member Massey?
Absent.
Member Paez?
Present.
All right, before we get started with the agenda, in relation to the meeting minutes from our last meeting, were there any changes to the meeting minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion from somebody to accept the minutes.
So move.
All right, we have a motion. All right, all those in favors, aye?
Aye.
All right. If we can get started, we have a presentation from our planning department related to the proposed zoning ordinance change that has been ongoing for a few months now and since last year, and will bring us up to speed and anybody else who might be watching on the status of that effort. So please, Director Aaron Clausen, if you'd like to give a few words, and then the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Aaron Clausen, the Principal Planner for the City of Lynn. Good to see you all. Some new faces here. Nice to meet you. Also, I want to introduce Lauren Drago, who is the Associate Principal Planner, working on this project to the Planning Department. And I also want to acknowledge both Chris and Chris Pull and Jim Lamont, who are part of the working group, working on this effort. So I've got a presentation here. I think I'm going to be using the slides to remind myself what I'm supposed to tell you, but they align with what we just handed out. So I'll try to, you know, give you some cues as we're moving along. So why rewrite, why rewrite zoning? I think the most clear answer for that is we, as a community, just finished creating our first ever comprehensive master plan for the city. That plan lays out a vision and goals for development in the future for the city, looking out twenty to twenty-five years. And the plan itself intentionally was written with land use and development in mind. We have our goals really wrapped around that development process. So the next step, the next step to implementing that and the most powerful tool that we have as a community is the zoning code. So the zoning code needs to align with your comprehensive plan. So this is just the next step in that process to make sure that we're laying the groundwork, the regulatory framework by which that that transformation can happen across the city along with other tools, but this is probably the strongest tool we have. It's also noteworthy that I don't think we had one written that we've written the zoning code since the twenties, since it was established in the city originally. So this is an opportunity to align our code with current objectives, current values that have been articulated by the community. I'm going to skip to the third slide here. We've been working through a collaborative process with Community Scale, the consulting firm that we've hired to help us work through this, funded through the housing of the local community. This is an HSD funding grant. And working really closely with the zoning working group, which includes members from the Planning Department, Solicitor's Office, Inspection Services, Mayor's Office, EDIC Lynn, City Council, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. I've had a chance to participate in those meetings as well, really engaging the talent scale that is within City Hall to inform how the zoning code has worked and how it can be improved, as well as it's been aligned with the Vision and Comprehensive Plan. Much of the engagement that goes into this proposed amendment with the community comes out of Vision in itself. So if you might recall, we had several thousand touchpoints with community members and stakeholders to kind of help us create that vision. So we're really building off of that work, but we have done a survey to get some feedback from the community on the things that we should be thinking about in a zoning change. Community Scale conducted a number of interviews by stakeholder groups or, I should say, really individuals, entities who are commonly working with the zoning code, like land use lawyers, people that come before you a lot, developers who have to try to understand the zoning code, to get just some feedback on what, again, what hasn't worked and what we should be thinking about in a zoning change. And then lastly, Community Scale conducted a comprehensive audit of our existing zoning ordinance, just to give us a feel for what's happening now, what are the things that we need to keep in mind structurally as we rework the zoning code. Both the survey and the audit are available online on Minnham Com. So if you wanted me to get into the data points there, encourage you to do so, but it was a helpful sort of baseline to help us think through the changes that are necessarily to be made. So what are the goals of the zoning change? We're trying, like I said, we're trying to rely on our zoning code with the proposed Vision Lynn. We want to ensure that we're increasing predictability of development and limit the reliance on zoning relief. And there's a couple of things there. One, as you all know, since you have to read it and understand it, our zoning code is not necessarily an easy thing to understand for anyone, let alone a layperson. So we want to make it more accessible for all users, including professionals to anybody who lives in the city. So clarify that, but also update the requirement itself so that it doesn't rely on zoning relief for new projects to happen. That's an economic development objective that helps ensure that we're getting investment within the community. We want to make sure that as we make this change, we're supporting high-quality development projects. So we have some changes in here that make sure that we have the tools as a community to shape development, continue to shape development, to align again with the goals. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then there's a lot of it we're not going to change. There's, we want to preserve the things that are working. So those are the overarching goals. I'm going to go back briefly to the Vision Lynn document itself to sort of highlight and remind members, what are the key objectives that came out of Vision Lynn? So there's three key themes for development. Housing is still very important in production of new housing and different housing types and different housing affordability is still a number one issue that the community raised in Vision Lynn. So we want to make sure that we're addressing that in the proposed zoning change. The second is jobs, environment, and vibrant commercial districts, making sure that we have job access and providing jobs here that also feeds into fiscal sustainability for the things that we, that we heard and we hear through Vision and Process that we are looking for better streets, better roadways, better parks, we have parks. New growth is a key aspect to delivering the resources to be able to provide those things. So make sure we're balancing our planning so it's a little bit better. And then we want to make sure that we're maximizing the benefits to the community that development can bring. So again, making sure that it's not just development for development's sake, it's development to achieve a community goal. Within Vision Lynn, we laid out the three principles for growth. We want to help existing activity nodes prosper and evolve. What is an existing activity? You know Downtown is like the key example of that. You've got mixed housing, jobs, institutions, all working together in a really symbiotic relationship that happens across the city. It scales from downtown into your neighborhood business districts. Making sure that we're linking those nodes to maximize accessibility and convenience, making them more walkable, more viable, more transit accessible. That also helps us mitigate the impacts of that redevelopment, making sure that we're connecting those up. Then lastly, preserving existing industrial and commercial activity to foster more job creation and rebalance our land use space. There's a graph here, if you're following along, it's the line graph, where we found about ninety percent of all of our tax bases is residential. That's really high for urban community like ours. We sort of benchmarked that with surrounding communities and we're several percentage points above our competitors. And you can see that, okay, because our here. Heard one, sorry about that. We do compete with Rovers, we do compete with Justian and Beverly as well. But the graph here is showing you that we are seeing new growth across the city, but it's predominantly the resident housing. So we want to make sure that we're growing more commercial tax base. It makes us more resilient, it has economic changes, but it also helps us bring in more planning for those resources that we need. The other side effect of this is more jobs, more jobs in City of Lynn, in the comprehensive plan, and we're able to show that there's a lot of transportation out of the city for renters to access the jobs, to make jobs accessible here. In Vision Lynn, we spent a fair amount of time identifying different kinds of place types across the city. The main point here is that this is really helping us transition those place types to the proposed zoning districts. And then I think this is the last comment on Vision Lynn, but you might recall, we also had this degree of change map. So we identified three essential areas in the city. There's Enhance Districts, Transform Districts, and Maintain. Enhance is a district where we like the scale of that place. We like the dynamic. We don't want to change it, but we see that there is a growth opportunity. This is a growth district for us. So we're looking at ways to support and grow infill that's consistent with the character of that place. Downtown, again, is a great example of that. We like the bones of the downtown. We just want new development to fill in the vacant spaces and help activate it a little bit further, provide more housing and job access. Transform is different. Transform intentionally, we're going into this process to make sure that at the end, at the end of our work as a community, it is a different place. The waterfront is our preeminent example of that, where right now it's primarily post-industrial, auto-oriented, commercial uses. We're looking to transform that into a walkable mixed-use neighborhood that brings a lot of jobs and activity and a different range of jobs and activity. And then for the rest of the city, the maintain, does it mean that nothing's happening there? We're still looking to invest and make these neighborhoods stronger and better, increasing quality of life. But really, if there's development, it's going to be very consistent. It's going to look exactly like what's going on around. It's not really what we're seeing as a growth area. So those are the three sort of degrees of change and types of development we're seeing in the zoning code is working to achieve those things. So aligning our zoning code with Vision Lynn, better to find our districts and maps to those different place types we talked about, ensuring that new development is encouraged around existing infrastructure. Again, we talked about corridors and connections, support vibrant commercial districts and economic activity by simplifying and updating use definitions. So a result of not having a comprehensive change for our zoning code over a long period of time, that means that our use definitions can be a bit antiquated. So we're looking to update our use definitions, particularly around the innovation sector for jobs and commercial uses, R and D, co-working spaces, incubators, and that sort of thing. And then make it easier for developers to build what the community wants to be built. It kind of goes without saying, if you have a goal, you want to make it easy for that goal to be achieved. So we also want to increase predictability of development. So if you're on, following along on your slides, there's, it's the bar graph around variances. Part of the audit that Community Scale had conducted for us, looked at the number of variances over time and about nearly three hundred variances were issued over an eight-year period between two thousand and sixteen and twenty-four. Most of them are dimensional. The lion's share of them are dimensional. There's a few use and use conversions. This isn't necessarily atypical in a community like ours, or particularly communities that have been around for a long time in eastern Massachusetts. But it does suggest that there's a mismatch between our dimensional regulations and what's coming through for development within the city. So one of the objectives is to right-size our zoning districts so we see less variance requests than we are now. And again, in the zoning audit, what Community Scale was able to do, and I think in a really compelling way, was show how nine out of every ten parcels, residentially zoned district parcels are non-compliant. So odds are the home you live in doesn't comply with zoning right now. And so what we're looking to do, I think only four percent of LYNs, resident lots, would be allowed if we were to try to build them today with today's zoning. So we need to, we're looking to right-size those dimensional requirements to bring more into a conformance and also allow new development that's consistent with the character, that's consistent with what's happening on the ground. So the proposed zoning changes are looking to right-size dimensional requirements. And I'll talk exactly what that means, but generally it's reducing lot area requirements. It updates the use table in districts to make it easier for property owners to build what the community wants, kind of the similar concept, sets clear requirements and more understandable code to drive economic development, and then enables property owners to rebuild existing houses by right after a disaster. So right now, what we see and heard a lot about is a building that's not conforming burns down. We've only got a year to get everything together to be able to rebuild exactly what existed. That's a very short period of time, and then we get a lot of vacant properties that are a blight on the community, but they can't build without a variance. So we're extending the ability to preserve that vested right after a fire or disaster so that those buildings can come back online more quickly. Supporting high-quality projects. So again, we talked about making it a more understandable zoning code. We're making some minor amendments to the site plan review process. We're still looking for the site plan review committee to be the authority on approving those. However, two things are happening. One is we're trying to beef up the notice requirements so that butters get notifications, the community gets notification when a site plan review meeting takes place. It's not necessarily going to be a public hearing. We're still trying to streamline that process, but we want to make sure the community is aware of it and has the opportunity to at least participate in the meeting and get access and see project plans as they come into the city for review. On the other side of this, we're adding requirements or the ability for the site plan review committee to add conditions on approvals that are binding, similar to what the Zoning Board of Appeals does with the variance, or in the case of a special permit that you're the granting authority on, giving the site plan review committee to add conditions to, again, shape a project and make sure it's fitting in with the objectives and the character of that area. Right now, the committee really doesn't have strong teeth on this front. So this is an important upgrade in terms of ensuring that new development is high-quality across the community. And then we have a, we're updating the use table to be a lot more flexible and, as I mentioned earlier, contemporary or more flexible and aligned with contemporary use definitions for commercial, industrial, and retail spaces. What we're not changing, we're not proposing any changes to the inclusionary zoning ordinance at the moment. No changes to the parking requirements as well. The City Council is going to remain the special permit granting authority across the board, although we are simplifying some of the districts. They're very consistent with what we are seeing now. You have residential districts R one, two, three, and four. Then you have commercial mixed-use districts like the Downtown and B one and B two, and industrial districts. Very consistent with what you see. It's just a reformulation of those. So we're not rethinking zoning as a concept. So I don't know if we can really look at it, but there's a lot of changes in the, there's a fair amount of changes in the zoning map. We're not going to try to hit all of those today, but in a moment, I'm going to highlight some of the key aspects of it. But just know that on Lynn in Common, we have both the updated or the proposed zoning map, and then there's an interactive map that you can sort of zoom into parcel, so you're going to get a real specific idea of what's being proposed and where. And then there's also a comparison app, so you can actually take a slider and go back and forth and see what the zoning district is now and what's being proposed. So you can get a really before and after look. So that's a good opportunity to get a real feel for what's being proposed. As far as the residential districts, we're going from five to four. So there's now only going to be R one, two, three, and four. R one is still a single-family zoning district. R two, primarily a two-family by right, but we do allow for a special permit for a three-family in certain occasions. Then R three and R four are larger multifamily properties. R five, the current R five and R four that exist now are basically the same thing. The dimensional requirements are essentially aligned, so we just eliminated R five and consolidated into one district. Okay. If you're following along, there should be a table that shows you four different versions of the R districts with pictures that align with them under the increasing predictability of development. This is to share with you the changes in the R district. So on the left side of the table is the R one district, and what it's showing you there is what the current lot size and frontage is for that district. It's ten thousand square feet for a single-family lot, seventy-five feet of frontage, and then what we're proposing. So for R one, we're proposing a six thousand square foot lot with fifty feet of frontage, so reducing those requirements a bit. And what we're showing in between is what the median lot size would be to capture fifty percent of all units to be compliant with the R one zoning code, and what the size would need to be for seventy-five percent compliance. We were shooting for fifty here. That's why you see a six thousand square foot lot. So we're not going to get all of our properties in compliance. I think that's probably a little too far for us to try and achieve, but we're trying to shoot for the median. Then as you move up the scale, R two goes from a twelve thousand square foot lot down to thirty-seven fifty. There's a lot area requirement to push that up a little bit for a two-family, but you can see how that plays across the different percentiles in median of existing lot sizes. Up to middle residential and high-rise residential, then you can see the scale of development by the pictures there as sort of example of what that would allow. As far as the dimensional table, again, unless you have any specific questions, just want to note a couple of things that, you know, we've updated the lot sizes and the frontage. We just talked about, added some additional dimensional requirements. In previous lot coverage, we've created a percentage of how much of the lot we need to have by previous services to improve a little bit more landscape opportunities for landscape in our residential areas. We've created a minimum lot area for dwelling units. So currently now building height and setbacks pretty much to provide unit count, density, housing density on a property, adding this lot area for dwelling unit to add an additional level of control on density within properties. And we came to these lottery for dwelling numbers by looking at some of the existing sample properties, basically buildings in the different residential districts to see how they're aligned. Again, to make sure that that character is consistent with what's on the ground. We do allow for a special permit to increase the lottery per dwelling unit or increase if we need more units, less lottery per dwelling unit by special permit. But that's an occasion where the project site may justify, given its location, it's probably going to be a trend to, but it's a kind of case-by-case discretion view that the City Council would have. And then we just cleaned up some of the size setbacks. And then on the bottom, we introduced a floor area ratio for residential and then created again an opportunity in the R three and R four to increase building height, again, by special permit of the City Council. I don't think I need to talk about this too much. You're all familiar with setbacks. This is really more of a reference picture to talk about what that is. Aside from the dimensional requirements in the residential districts, we are proposing a shift in R one and R two. So if you're looking at the, if you're following along, it's under changes in allowable density. There's, you can see a blue, it's an orange district. In the zoning audit that Community Scale did, they noticed in West Lynn, up towards Walnut Street, that although it's Zone R two allows two families by right, it's predominantly single-family homes. And so what we're actually proposing here is to downzone that from an R two to an R one to be more consistent with what's going on in those neighborhoods. But again, remember, there are smaller lots, and those lots are, you know, are a little bit more consistent again with the size of lots in the neighborhoods. But what we're saying is we want to make sure that the future development looks like that neighborhood. On the flip side, in East Lynn, we noticed that there's a lot of areas that are Zone R one, or it's a single-family zoning district, but in those areas, the character is predominantly two, three, four-unit, multi-families. So in certain corridors, along certain corridors, not not across the board, you can see an orange there, we're looking to upzone that into an R two or R three in the context. So it's just a shift in where the housing infill might take place. We asked Community Scale to kind of tell us what that might be in terms of housing production, and for all intents and purposes, it's kind of an even trade-off where it's about three hundred and ninety less housing would be allowed based on those changes. So it's kind of, it's neutral in terms of housing production. It's just locating new housing units where there's transit, where there's better access to transit and infrastructure and in neighborhoods that have multifamilies in it already. Does that make, I want to pause right there. Does this make sense?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Related to the map. So there's the MTA communities, which are the purple circles. What's the blue circle?
Oh yeah, that's the ferry terminal. Okay. Yep.
Question on slide nineteen, where you're talking about the different residential lot sizes. It looked like three out of four, you're kind of selecting an R one, R two, R three, R four, close to what the median is, but for the R two, it seemed like it was a little less. Was there a rationale for that?
Yeah, the thirty-seven fifty is for, that's for the family. That's the minimum lot size for a single family. The two-family pushes up a little bit, closer to that four thousand median. So the minimum lot size applies to a single-family home. If you're going to put a two-family on it, it's going to require a slightly larger lot.
So I'm just looking at the slide nineteen. So it says R two thirty-seven fifty, and then on the the chart on the right, it says R two, on the next page, R two thirty-seven fifty, and then the median is forty-eight thirty-two. The current is twelve thousand.
Yeah, so if you add two, if you add two units, it would be, it's like forty, it's like forty-seven fifty.
And how do you calculate that?
That's the lottery per dwelling unit. So it's twenty-three seventy-five. If you look down one, two, three, four, five lines on that dimensional table, twenty-three seventy-five is the lottery per dwelling unit. So if you're going to have two dwelling units on a property, multiply it by two.
Yeah, the other picture, I was like, how are you going to have parking and all that?
You still have to be able to provide parking, right? So these are minimum lot size, but you have to, you still have to be able to provide parking within the dimensional.
And the two-family could be the two or three parking stalls. So if somebody did that, sort of dimensional math or visual math, that you could do that?
It's the trigonometry that goes into setting up, you know, new lots in any kind of development project process. It wouldn't be three. We don't require three parking spaces per dwelling unit. It would be, depends on the.
If you had a two-family, it would be two dwelling units.
Right, 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 right.
But what are trans, how do you define transformational areas?
Yes.
Obviously, the one near the South Harbor, that's self-defined, but there's a couple of others, I think Boston Street and along.
You mean in
Weston Avenue?
In terms of zoning?
Yeah, what does it mean by transformational? Like, what are you trying to do with that?
Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me jump. Can we hold on that? Because that's coming up. Yeah.
I have a question about the analysis on this three nine four. Is that referencing back to the analysis on thirteen, where things were, nine out of ten were out of compliance?
Yes.
This contemplating ethical future for the community?
This is, wait, let me see if I can understand your question.
So the three hundred and eighty-nine four is, if this were in place?
Oh, I see.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a housing production analysis. This is not a guarantee that there would be, you know, X number of housing units that are built. But if you just at a street level look at the lot sizes and what's allowed in those zoning districts, what would that yield potentially? So it's slightly less.
It's not a projection on what's likely to happen.
It's more of a yield. Good question. Moving up here. I'm gonna, so just real briefly, I want to hit one thing before we go into the transformation question, because I think this is a pretty important one. One of the major, one of the bigger changes to the zoning code. We talked a little bit about the R three and R four, where the minimum lot size is We talked a little bit about the R three and R four where the 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 minimum lot size or is, I mean, get back to the site quote it correctly. Fifteen thousand square feet currently. And we've got a lot of our neighborhoods that are sort of smaller lots, really granular, two or three unit multi families that are actually zoned R three and R four. That for all intents and purposes prevents infill development at the scale of what's happening there. But what, but in a case where you actually are able to grab fifteen thousand square feet. Our dimensional requirements currently allow for up to five stories and don't have sort of a slot area for dwelling unit limit. So we see, we've had occasion where in a, in a neighborhood that has that kind of smaller scale, kind of human scale height of buildings, three stories, two units. You got a, all of a sudden, a twenty seven unit, five story multi family kind of right in the middle of that neighborhood. The housing production is good, but that's not really kind of what we're, we're trying to achieve. We want infill development that's happening in these communities that that again reflect what the character of that neighborhood is. So we looked at a property at ninety eight Spencer Street. This is currently zoned R four, would not be, you would, you would have to seek a variance to build here. And so what we have shown with the, with the zoning change is a, a three unit property could go in here by right under the proposed zoning because it's got, you know, minimum lot size of forty five hundred square feet. It's got the the fifteen hundred per lot area per dwelling unit. It can fit the parking spaces. But this is an example of how we can grow somewhere housing, particularly family housing that that is getting locked up with the neighborhood and what the neighborhood looks like. So I think that's a really important aspect of this, that that we're, it's not that we're creating, we're not necessarily creating a huge increase in housing opportunities in the different neighborhoods. But what we're allowing for is new housing that's consistent with these neighborhoods, kind of help enhance and maintain what's going on there. To get back to some of that terminology. So I'm gonna skip here ahead a little bit to the industrial and R and D slide, because I feel like I'm going a bit long. Happy to answer any of the commercial districts, but to your question about the transform. The water, again, the waterfront is the area that we're, we're looking for that transformation. And we pulled from both Vision Lynn, we created a Gearworks concept for the redevelopment around the the Future River workstation. And then subsequently created the South Harbor implementation plan to lay out a land use mix and street network that would facilitate a more commercial and innovation type of a district. And what we're trying to do is support with, with something on the screener is an example of a typology proposed in Boston whereby you have a high bay ground floor of eighteen to twenty two feet that would facilitate support manufacturing or fabrication. But then you have multi stories above that that would allow for R and D or office or back office space. So we're, we're really trying to drive intense commercial redevelopment on the waterfront, whereas right now most of the waterfront, whether it's waterfront one, two, three, or four, it's really designed to incent mixed use with the residential piece to that. And then within that, we are adding a number of different land use or land use categories and definitions across a continuum from, that goes from the very kind of like lowest impact on a neighborhood such as an office or medical office or retail to the other end of the spectrum of heavy industrial. And we're really trying to articulate in a discreet manner where those different use types can happen easily because they, they are creating job opportunity. They have limited impact given their context, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to lay that out in the zoning code to cue, to cue to the development community and end users what we want and where we want it. And we're saying to them, we're going to make it easy for you to move here. So the, the South Harbor plan kind of shows you how that that's intended to lay out. This is the, the, the plan. It's got purple and orange. So whereas now the waterfront districts, as I mentioned, are predominantly mixed use residential. We're looking at that center section of the waterfront to be more commercial and industrial. The darker purple is the R and D district. These are the multi story opportunities for manufacturing and R and D. Lighter purple is like manufacturing, smaller scale or entrepreneurial. You know, co working spaces, incubator spaces, or just, just shops, you know, who are employing ten to twenty people. That's what we're allowing there now. And then as you radiate out north and south, you see the orange, which is more of a mixed juice with ground floor, commercial and residential above. You can still do office and that sort of thing, but it's more likely to be a residential component to that. The other thing that I want to highlight is that in the South Harbor plan, we identified this new street network that had to accommodate the sort of growth. So as we all know right now, really the only way to move around waterfront is along the lineway. So in the South Harbor plan, we made out a strategy for creating a series of streets. AV Road, what we're calling AV Road along the computer rail, Lineway, Circle Ave, extending those out. So it's a complete street network to support that growth, support the commercial users. So that's being built into the zoning code. So as as development happens on the waterfront. A property owner or developer that's going to redevelop there, they benefit from some pretty generous zoning allowances. They allow for high buildings, lot of density, parlor trade offs to provide this to network components, which is like mirrors. So that's the, that's the, that's the work around the transformation side of things. I should want to go through, but the, the R and D and industrial and heavy and light industrial zoning districts allow for, the dimensional standards allow for large, you know, you know, large, you know, opportunities that that would bring.
See that one, Boston Street in sort of the West Hill Empire or Weston Avenue?
Yeah, Boston Street's still light industrial. And I would say Boston Street is pretty much remaining the same as it is, is that.
Okay.
Yeah, because what, what we would want to do before we actually think about a transform for Boston Street is do an actual area study. And we haven't really had the chance to do that with the community to say, hey, what, what does a transformation look like over here? We've had the chance to do that, the Gearworks, and had a chance to do that with the South Harbor plan. And the years of planning that the city's done for the waterfront, but Boston Street, we need it, we really should look at that before we propose any major changes. So at the moment, it's basically the same.
It looked like it was targeted as a potential transformational area on the road.
It wasn't Vision Lynn, yeah.
Yeah.
It definitely was, but the first we need to do is the neighborhood plan.
Okay.
And then there's an open space institutional layer. I quote that. It's pretty, pretty basic. So next steps. You know, I mentioned a survey, I think that was out. We feel like we're, we're checks the boxes here, what we're trying to achieve. We have a open public comment period until, until the twenty third. We've had new open houses. We've had some, some sorts of basic outreach. At the end of that period, we are going to take all the comment that we received, consider some changes, respond if we're not going to change and put that out also for the community to see how that that's changing with the hope of having a, a final zoning amendment submitted to the city council late April, May. So that's the time frame. So that was a lot of information. So.
Is there, is there thought on sort of the, I guess, sort of the ancillary ordinances that may be required based on these zoning sort of reworking to kind of mitigate what what may come as a result of changing this? And, you know, do you have a couple of examples of that?
Yeah, there's, there's one that we're thinking that we will need to look at is it, it's the short term rental ordinance. And we want to make sure that, that, that it's aligned with the zoning code. So they'll, we'll be looking at that a little bit. And there's, you know, there's some references into the short term ordinance that's separate from zoning that actually talks about zoning districts. And so we need to clean that sort of thing up.
Exactly.
But I don't think we've had any other than the short term rental that we've, we've pegged.
I think I think the commercial parking, that residence, so that's been.
The zoning code is talking about, you know, commercial parking and we're looking to clean that up a bit too. Yeah. Yeah, there's some language in there. I don't know if I could reference it off the top of my head, but it's worth looking at.
I've never seen it. So and then from that, like, it's probably like the noise ordinance probably needs to go with that. So we're not revving up trucks at three and eleven kind of things.
Yeah, I think it's, um.
Yeah, I think when people come before us, those are the types of things they're going to complain about.
Yeah.
In a public area. And how do we sort of be proactive in addressing that so that doesn't?
Yeah, yeah. Our goal is to not have, not require a special permit and just have a very clear.
Yep.
Or a variance or just have a very clear, here's what the standard is. Here's what we're allowing, here's what we're not allowing.
Find enough that people know what they can do. So if they don't need it, then ISD can go down there and.
Right.
Say you can't do.
Yeah. A key piece of this and in really, you know, having Chris and Jim participate in this process. Is making sure that what we're writing is actually forcible, you know. And it's one thing to actually have a, a goal. It's something that actually works on the ground. And so it's, we're, we're trying to stress test it, stress test it so that once it's adopted, the city has the tools to enforce it.
And it is flexible. You can always refine it.
Oh, yeah.
Once you figure out, you know, where the need is.
Yeah, we, we, we hope not to do this again in eighty years, you know, it's, you know, I think there's, there's opportunity to keep things going. But and and this was not intended, you know, we, we talked a lot about what we weren't touching. That's, that's primarily because we, you know, we're, our feeling is those elements are working. But our primary goal is to sort of set the operating system, and we'll borrow this terminology from another community, but set the operating system and get it updated and operable so that we can plug in changes in a more sort of logical way as they're needed. And we'll, so for example, we will need to look at our inclusionary zoning ordinance over the next six months to make sure those affordability levels still work. And we need to, we need to continually monitor those.
And it seemed like, you know, the city was built, then they did zoning, and the zoning really didn't match what was built. And now you're trying to fit what is actually there and accommodate what's there and fill in the gaps. And then where do we need to.
Yeah, yeah. Really focusing that development in like, like, like we said earlier, in nodes where there's, where there's current activity, where there's the infrastructure to support that. So we're really trying to focus and reorient it where it is. I would say, you're absolutely right. I think what happened in Massachusetts across the board is somewhere around the seventies and eighties, there was an effort across the board to sort of upzone. And so you got all these zoning changes that significantly increased dimensional requirements. And I think right now, the part, I don't think, we pretty much know in eastern Massachusetts, our housing crisis has a large part to do with that, that thing that happened in the eighties. So we're just trying to write, again, we're trying to right size it now to our condition.
Yeah, this is some fun, I would say.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Has there been any thought about sort of better defining what more specific uses go into like different categories? I just, I know that we, I think, had an issue with that about a month or two ago. And I really didn't, I wasn't able to look at the ordinance and kind of figure out where different things would go on a table of uses.
Yeah, we, we, we actually, one of the biggest efforts that was going to the zoning change is to create a lot more definition around use types. So if you look at the, I encourage you to look at the definitions and what's drafted, because there, there's considerably more different use types that are being defined. And we tried to be, update and clarify those definitions. So the ambiguity is lessened. I would, I would never say that we're going to eliminate ambiguity just because technology, the market changes faster than zoning changes. But what we really tried to do here is add a lot of definition and clarity around the different use types. And we wanted to do that to make it easy for enforcement, for board members, but also for developers so that they know what they can and do. And, you know, they're, they're trying to fill these spaces. And we're trying to, we're trying to tread a thin line between something that might be acceptable and what not, but, but, but that might not be acceptable in a given neighborhood. So, so by, by doing that, you create a lot of different use types and definitions so that you really clear what is appropriate, what is not. But I would encourage you, if, if that's something you're running up against, please take a look at the definitions. Because if they're not cutting it, we, we want to know. We still have a chance to, to, to update it.
Looking here at the, putting my climate resilience hat on the block overlay district. The city council currently is the special permit granting authority?
Yep. Yep.
Then the other question, in terms of more practicality, or how this new chapter in zoning in Lynn would look like for us? Would it be that, is there a sense of what is the type of cases that will be probably?
Yeah.
Will there be a change? Will it be mostly low density residential now, less so, less probable commercial or industrial cases?
Do you mean coming before the, the board? Yeah, um, I would, I mean, this is hard to prognosticate, but I think there's likely to still be dimensional variances coming in because even though, like I said, we're trying to right size them, you, you saw that we're still achieving fifty percent compliance. So you're likely to see dimensional variances. Where with the ADU amendment, we eliminated use variances from residential districts. So I'm not likely to see use variances in residential because it's not allowed. We are currently allowing it for commercial uses is how we, we left it. So you may see some use variances in commercial districts, but again, our goal is that, that that not be the case. I think, you know, once this is adopted from a policy perspective, we want to see less variance requests. And I think that we would want to see a really high bar for variance to be approved. It's understandable. And you see them all the time right now with such a mismatch between what's going on on the grounds, what has been allowed over time. It's, it's hard to understand like what's the line? I think once we go through this, it's fair to say the goal is to essentially eliminate variances. They're never going to be completely eliminated. They shouldn't be, but significantly reducing the amount of them.
Yeah. So that, that is kind of a concern that I had a while ago. And I, I do think we needed clarity on the use variance issue because I, I do kind of see a conflict in what chapter forty eight says about it needs to be specifically in the ordinances for zoning board to grant ordinances. And what our practice is, but it was until two weeks ago. So if we are going to continue to allow commercial use variances in some form, I, I think our ordinances should reflect that.
Yeah. Should actually state that it's allowed.
Yeah, I, I think that that's what the statute calls for.
Yeah, yeah. I believe that's also the case. You have to, you have to, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jim, I think you have to allow a use variance in your ordinance for it to be applicable. And we're, we're just going to make it clear in residential, it's not allowed, in commercial it is.
Yeah, it just needs to affirmatively say that. It's my understanding.
Yep.
And I, I wasn't able to find that before. That's all you need.
Yeah. Right. So, yeah, yeah, we're, we're just trying to make it clear. And I think, you know, in resident, in residential districts, we want to make it pretty clear, like, if you're not, if you, if you're not a residential use, it's, it's not an option.
Yeah.
There's an existing nonconformities that, that could still expand or, you know. So that, that's still available, but use variances are.
I guess one question just to work, what's the rollout going to be for the new ordinance? And especially like when we get in cases like, how do they tell us the difference between one year prior to normal or is it centered around like?
In, in, in terms of just informing.
Yeah.
The using public, yeah. Well, there is, there'll be, first of all, there'll be a city council vote that, that will, you know, create the ordinance. We will make sure that everything's available online. I think we'll be doing some outreach. I don't know if we've really planned any sort of stakeholder meetings, but we're going to make ourselves available to work, work with the ordinance and work with other boards to talk through what, you know, what the new intentions were. With the, you know, the dimensional stuff is probably pretty easy to figure out. But, you know, particularly when you're talking about a discretionary permit or a section six finding that you're dealing with. You know, we're happy to be available to us. available to help walk through that. I don't have any other thoughts on that one? Please do.
So for the record, Lauren Drago, Associate Planner. I just wanted to emphasize, so although the public comment is wrapping up next week on the twenty-third, I just really wanted to underline what Aaron was saying, that this is a great time for us to be making edits to the zoning code. We really want, by the time this goes to the council and the planning board to adopt this, to be something everybody is happy with. So now is the time to hear if we got anything wrong. We've had seven hundred people visit our webpage, we've had three hundred downloads of the zoning map and the zoning code. So people are engaging with this, and we are getting some really good detailed feedback from people who've used this code over the years. But that said, we want more now ideally. So anything that you can do, like, if you can be checking for, you know, make sure that we're hitting what you think we need to for use variances, if there's other things that are confusing or challenging, we want to hear that now. And that also extends to your social networks too. I think people look up to you in the community as, as folks are working on this. So making sure people know that there's a zoning code ordinance rewrite under consideration. It really is very helpful for us to get the word out, so that folks know this is coming.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and hopefully, well, hopefully, I think the intention with the sort of deliberative approach in writing this and sort of the working with the different departments is that, once it's adopted, there's a, there's sort of a clear understanding internally about how the ordinance is intended to work and the meaning of it. Clearly, there's still being engagement with the, you know, professional community of residents. We need to try to work around it. But yeah, the idea is that on day one, it's, it's understood and more accessible in some ways than it is now.
Good question in terms of the current draft, the actual code. Is that available in any other language than English, or not yet?
Yeah, we can still leave it in English.
Yes. Will non-English speakers have the opportunity to still read it in a draft form reports presented to the council, or is that, in terms of timeline, maybe not?
Yeah, we don't have, we have no plans to translate the ordinance right now.
And then the other question, once council approves it, will this be in addition to a great searchable PDF, which is good? Are there plans for it to be uploaded into the web like eCode or MuniCode?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think there's a separate process that, that, that the city's looking at for like a, the, the idea is that this easily could be formulated into that sort of act. Yeah. But once, once it's adopted, it, it won't automatically be in a MuniCode kind of environment. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I thought that this is a phenomenal document, and it seems like a great help for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. All right. So, thank you for waiting.
I'm gonna, well, I'm reading. Yeah, we read this already, but I'm going to read the beginning just to
Yeah, just the address and the case number at least.
Yeah. So three thirty-four Western Avenue in Massachusetts, parcel number zero seven one six eight three zero zero three, Eder Hurtado, three thirty-four Western Avenue en mas by his agent representative, Abraham Alvarez, CBA ten one oh one. To vary pursuant to master and law, chapter thirty, section ten, the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance, to allow the conversion of a one-family into a two-family dwelling in the Arc Two District. Multiple dimensional variances are required for lot size of four thousand one hundred and ninety-three square feet, where twelve thousand is required, frontage of forty point eight five feet, where seventy-five feet is required, side setback of two feet, where seven and a half are required, and maximum building area of thirty-one point two six percent, where thirty percent is maximum allowed. The petition also requires a variance from Section Nine of the Zone Ordinance, requiring two parking stalls where there does not exist a single compliant off-street parking and/or proposed parking does not meet the dimensional requirements of Section Nine. Both spaces are not more than five feet from the property line, and one is constructed partially under the enclosed porch building. Both spaces require backing out into Western Avenue. The lot also does not possess required parking spaces or buffer.
Yeah. So, thank you again. My name is Indy Alvarez, for the Record and Project Manager with Engle Construction, and with me today is Abraham Alvarez. We were hired by Mr. Eder Hurtado to correct the wrongs that were started, and I appreciate the board giving us an extension the last time we were here, to bring before you some of the recommendations and changes that you had before you. In front of you, what we have given is a letter from the fire department, I had him running around a bit, but a letter from the fire department showing the violations that were corrected, allowing Mr. Hurtado to be on the first floor. The other is a copy of the permit, where you will see the final signature from the building inspector, also showing the work that was done to include the demolition of the basement area. In addition, we circled as recommended, as you guys requested, in the plans, the red areas of what was added. There was also an issue of the stairs that was facing, the way it was facing, we had the architect put it on the opposite direction, you will see it in the, in the plans. There was the issue of the fence, where there was a request to ask Mr. Hurtado to change that fence. That wooden fence is not Mr. Hurtado's fence, it is his neighbor's. What you will see is a stone wall, that fence area. We did suggest Mr. Hurtado to have a conversation with his neighbor and see whether or not the two of them will come together and come to some sort of agreement to fix what up. My understanding is that he stated that that fence is his neighbor, that's why he did, what he did, I think. There was one other request you guys made, but we did have the architects do all the necessary updates, and the final document on here is a certified plot plan to show, I think that's one of the other requests that you guys had made. But we brought before, everything hoping for, if, if allowed.
Thank you.
So we have a letter from the fire department?
Yeah. Can we read the letter, please? For the record.
A letter to my concern, this letter is to inform you that an inspection was conducted at three thirty-four Western Avenue. At the time of the inspection, the smoke detectors were functioning properly and were interconnected. Additionally, please note that work was being performed to dismantle the non-compliant and non-permitted work in the basement. Have any questions? Need further information? Lieutenant Israel Gonzalez, Chief Fire Inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Opening up the floor to the record.
Just one, yeah, just one. There is a building permit, and I think we wanted a similar type of letter from Inspection Services.
We requested, and I know Chris is here, but we requested the letter from the building inspector, we met with them, and they said that what they normally issue is a permit with their final signature on it, and that's why we brought that copy. But they, and, and the only, they generally don't give out a letter. The only, it's going to work, I, I worked for Inspection Services for Boston for twenty-eight years and I've retired, and I know that we generally, for good reasons, I went through, they have the presentation just now. But I understood what they were saying, and I did bring the permit with the final signature from, I think it was Inspector Donovan, but it's not, it wasn't some, I don't know if there's a correction, but it's not generally something that they issue in terms of letters.
Just for the record, the last inspection from the building inspector was today.
Yeah. And that's what that reflects.
Yeah.
Yeah, they see the updated plan, so the, the deck in the back, you reconfigured the stairs, so it, it opens up the path for any firefighters to get around the rear of the building.
Yes.
Easy. And then it looks like there's a considerable amount of stonework that's been done
Mm-hmm.
Along the property line, and it looks like there's a wall, I'm not sure. Does the plot plans show the extent of that wall, like, from where to where? It, it looks, it looks like it's almost as tall as the fence in, in some sections.
I didn't show.
And the claim, just to be clear, that was mentioned before, the stone wall that goes all the way back of the parcel as it looks from the picture, is what Mr. Hurtado claims, that is his property, not the fence's.
Yes, yes.
So, do you have a copy of the plot plan, man?
It's in the back of the packet. I, I, please tell me I made a copy of it. I think I gave it to you guys, the last page.
Okay.
I don't think it.
So the one that's in here still shows the stairs, the way it was configured before, the one I have, there's one that's put in there. The updated one?
Yeah.
It is a proposed one.
Yeah, it exists, but we have it before.
Yeah.
And the plans itself should show the change, so.
I see the plans with the plot plan.
Oh, you mean I?
Did I give you?
Yeah. The plot plan with the same view?
Yeah, it should show the stairs, and should show the stone wall, where the stone wall is.
Yeah, that one, no, this one, the plot plan. It isn't shown.
In other words, the, the back stairs were reconfigured, and then, in other words, you're going to have at least six point four feet instead of, say, inches?
Right now, it's all the way to the fence.
Right. So, and, and just to show that, that wall's pretty, pretty nice wall, pretty significant, but it should be on the plot plan along that.
We could, we could definitely have that conversation, but the.
And there's a section that's taller?
Mm-hmm.
Like, I want to see if they had taller. Is it, does it line up with the deck?
No, what happened, this is a, a wall, but also it's a returning wall.
Right.
But you're asking if it's connected to a deck in the back?
No, no, it's, it looks like there's a section of it that, that's much higher than the rest of the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at the picture.
Back, yeah.
Oh, but this is like a coming down, but.
It's a slow, but.
Well.
We can provide that as well, but it was, I didn't focus on that, I'll be really honest.
Yeah. I'm looking at, in the set here, it's, it looks like
Yeah.
It steps down in the back. Looks like.
Oh, and this, this, this one in the box is.
Because it's higher, it looks higher.
These are the kind of wall.
Yeah. So I just want to see where that is.
Cinder block.
But you want to see it on the plot plan.
Yeah, you have, you have these cinder blocks, and then you have a stone wall, but
It doesn't show it on the.
The caps on it, none of that shows on the plot plan.
I can't see that.
Okay. I think that, that stone wall suffices. What my concern was, is we, you have some barrier there, so if something happened to the neighbor's fence, it's still going to be a barrier there.
But then just update the plot plan to make sure what is there now.
What's actually there.
Okay.
So is, am I reading this right, to say that the only, the addition on the back was only a deck?
Well, there, there should be other, there was more than a.
Hello, just another.
Within the footprint of this.
It's all in, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have the page.
There's more in the folder that you want.
So, yeah.
You can check the A dash one point eight.
Yeah, A dash one point eight should show, it's, it's more than just a.
And then the bottom, they're just seeing footprint, but on the top, it's a.
That's what he added more to.
They closed off, see this little shed roof there? They're actually closing that off.
Okay. Oh, okay, because I see on page two of the new plans that the red area looks like it only circles the deck.
Yeah, so that, but the page before, so we circled everything that, at the last meeting, we requested to circle everything that we thought we were, that they had to.
Right.
But we also circled, there's several pages, we circled the section where all of the entries were added to us, we, so when we came here last week, none of that was shown. So we wanted to make sure, as was requested by the board, that we showed you what was there when, when they acquired our services.
Because actually, it's two, two, two sections. One is the one on top of the, and the second floor, and the other one is on the deck.
Oh, so the addition was on top of that little
Yeah.
This thing?
Yeah, and the other one is the deck.
Yeah.
They're not same footprint.
Yeah. And so you've gotten the bottom floor inspected, and so that's where your client lives currently.
Exactly.
Has anything in that area been inspected?
In terms of like the second floor?
Oh, yeah.
So we, they, they went up when they shut.
I know it was done illegally, but it, you know, is.
The, and I forgot. The affidavit from the, we had an engineer go out to, go ahead and look at the space and whether or not it was safe or what have you, and they gave us an affidavit, but I, my error did not bring that with.
It's going to be for.
In the original package.
Okay, I think it's.
We, once we were hired illegally, like, hired, so, because I'm not, what we're not doing is putting our license and our name in jeopardy, and it's one of those things where we've been really actively letting Mr. Hurtado know that we're doing this by the book, or we're walking away. Here's the reason we're here, and the demolition of the basement, and making sure that moving forward, everything will be permitted. If at any point there's any issues where I don't want to do X, Y, and Z, we're removing our name from it. But so far, he is, he is trying to be in compliance, because he hired a licensed contractor, we're doing everything again by the book. We've been in business for over twenty-something years, and, well, mostly him, because I work for the city, and we're trying to make sure that he isn't complying. I am someone by the book, I don't, I don't play with the law. And my name is all I have, so I want to make sure I don't walk away with it intact.
So, so your permit right now is to do the basement and the second floor work?
Yeah.
And in order to get occupancy on?
Requested, yeah.
To be inspected.
Exactly, exactly. And that permit is on, is, that request is on hold, and we are submitted an amended proposal for all of the work in terms of what he wants to do in the basement and stuff with Inspection Services. And we've been working with Inspector Donovan and Inspector Keek, for whatever reason, I keep forgetting his last name. And I think we've asked Chris enough quite often, but we are just trying to make sure to keep Mr. Hurtado online.
But the, so, the, what you'd be applying for is to keep it as what it currently is, as a single family?
And to.
You couldn't use the, you couldn't live in the part that was added on?
And bring it to compliance.
Well, that's what you're.
Yes, to bring it into compliance, yeah.
The building permits that have been issued.
Have been to correct the wrongs to allow him to live on the first floor.
Yes.
That is what we, we requested permits on, and it's on the second page, where you would see the original permit when we first had, hold in, it was, sorry, it was to do the electrical changes or what have you, and then check, what side permit to check the smaller apartment. So those things were like the immediate life safety issues that we needed to address, and that's what, that one permit was requested, but then the other permit is continuously on.
Nice. We already have the application for the other permit for phase two, which is convert the first, the single family into a two-family, and do all the
The work that is.
The work that.
Is maximum allowed. The petition also requires a variance from Section Nine of the Zone Ordinance, requiring two parking stalls where there does not exist a single compliant off-street parking and/or proposed parking does not meet the dimensional requirements of Section Nine. Both spaces are not more than five feet from the property line, and one is constructed partially under the enclosed porch building. Both spaces require backing out into Western Avenue. The lot also does not possess required parking spaces or buffer.
Yeah. So, thank you again. My name is Indy Alvarez, for the Record and Project Manager with Engle Construction, and with me today is Abraham Alvarez. We were hired by Mr. Eder Hurtado to correct the wrongs that were started, and I appreciate the board giving us an extension the last time we were here, to bring before you some of the recommendations and changes that you had before you. In front of you, what we have given is a letter from the fire department, I had him running around a bit, but a letter from the fire department showing the violations that were corrected, allowing Mr. Hurtado to be on the first floor. The other is a copy of the permit, where you will see the final signature from the building inspector, also showing the work that was. Inspector, also showing the work that was done to include the demolition of the basement area. In addition, we circled, as recommended, as you guys requested, in the plans, the red areas of what was added. There was also an issue of the stairs that was facing, the way it was facing, we had the architect put it on the opposite direction, you will see it in the, in the plans. There was the issue of the fence, where there was a request to ask Mr. Urtalo to change that fence, that wooden fence is not Mr. Urtalo's fence, it is his neighbor's. What you will see is a stone wall, that fence area. We did suggest Mr. Urtalo to have a conversation with his neighbor and see whether or not the two of them will come together and come to some sort of agreement to fit. But my understanding is that he stated that that fence is his neighbor, that's why he did what he did, I think. There was one other request you guys made, but we did have the architects do all the necessary updates, and the final document on here is a certified plot plan to show that, I think that's one of the other requests that you guys had made, but we brought before everything hoping for, if, if allowed.
Thank you.
So, you have a letter from the fire department?
Yeah, can we read the letter, please, for the record?
Letter to make a concern, this letter is to inform you that an inspection was conducted at 334 Western Avenue. At the time of the inspection, the smoke detectors were functioning properly and were interconnected. Additionally, please note that work was being performed to dismantle the noncompliant and nonpermitted work in the basement. Have any questions? For further information, Lieutenant Israel Gonzalez, Chief Fire Inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Opening up the floor to the rest of the board.
Yeah, there is a building permit, but I think we wanted a similar type of letter from Inspection Services.
We requested, and I know Chris is here, but we requested the letter from the Building Inspector. We met with them, and they said that what they normally issue is a permit with their final signature on it, and that's why we brought that copy. But they, and, and they generally don't give out a letter. The only, it's gonna where, I work for Inspection Services for Boston for 28 years and have retired, and I know that we generally, for good reasons, I went through, they have the presentation just now, but I understood what they were saying, and I did bring the permit with the final signature from, I think it was Inspector Donovan, but it's not, it wasn't something, I don't know if there's a correction, but it's not generally something that they issue in terms of letters.
Just for the record, the last inspection from the Building Inspector was today.
Yeah. And that's what that reflects.
Yeah, they see the updated plan, so the, the deck in the back, you reconfigured the stairs, so it, it opens up the path for any firefighter to get around the rear of the building.
Yes.
And then it looks like there's a considerable amount of stonework that's been done along the property line, and it looks like there's a wall, I'm not sure. The plot plans show the extent of that wall, like from where to where. It looks, looks like it's almost as tall as the fence in some sections.
I didn't show.
And the claim, just to be clear, that was mentioned before, the stone wall that goes all the way back of the parcel as it looks from the picture, is what Mr. Urtalo claims that is his property, not the fence's.
Yes, yes.
So, do you have a copy of the plot plan, lady?
It's in the back of the packet. I, I, please tell me I made a copy of it. I think I gave it to you guys, the last page.
Okay.
I don't think it.
So, the one that's in here still shows the stairs, the way it was configured before the one I have, there's one that's put, an updated one?
Yeah.
It is a proposed one.
Yeah, it's a system, but we probably.
Yeah.
And the plans itself should show the change, so.
I see the plans with the plot plan.
Oh, you mean a.
Did I give you?
Yeah. Plot plan with the same view.
Yeah, it should show the stairs, and should show the stone wall, where the stone wall is.
Yeah, that would be my, no, this one, the plot plan. It doesn't show.
In other words, the, the back stairs were reconfigured, and in other words, you're gonna have at least 6.4 feet instead of, say, inches?
Right now, was all the way to the fence.
Right. So, and, and just to show that that wall's pretty, pretty nice wall, pretty significant, but it should be on the plot plan along that.
We could, we could definitely have that conversation, but yeah.
And there's a section that's taller?
Mm-hmm.
Like, I want to see if they had taller. Is it, does it line up with the deck?
No, what happened, this is a, a wall, but also it's a retention wall.
Right.
Because the outside is higher.
But you're asking if it's connected to a deck in the back?
No, no, it's, it looks like there's a section of it that, that's much higher than the rest of the wall. Looking at the picture.
Back, yeah.
All the, this is like coming down.
It's like a slope, but.
Well.
We can provide that as well, but it was, I didn't focus on that, I'll be really honest.
Yeah, I'm looking at, in the set here, it's, it looks like it steps down in the back.
You see that?
Oh, this, this, this one in the box is.
Because it's higher, it looks higher.
These are the kind of wall.
Yeah.
No.
So I just want to see where that is.
It's like a cinder block.
But you want to see it on the plot plan.
Yeah, you have these cinder blocks, and then you have a stone wall.
It doesn't show it on the.
With the caps on, and none of that shows on the plot plan.
I can't see that.
Okay. I think that, that stone wall suffices. What my concern was is we, you have some barrier there, so if something happened to the neighbor's fence, it's still gonna be a barrier there.
But then just update the plot plan to make it show what is there now.
What's actually there.
Okay.
So, is, am I reading this right to say that the only, the addition on the back was only a deck?
Well, there, there should be other, there was more than a.
Hello, just another.
With the footprint of this other area.
It's all in, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have the page.
There's more in the folder.
So, yeah.
You can check the A dash 1.8.
Yeah, A dash 1.8 should show, it's, it's more than just a.
At the bottom, there's the same footprint, but on the top, it's a.
That's what he added more to.
They closed off, see this little shed roof there? They're actually closing that off.
Okay. Oh, okay, because I see on page two of the new plans that the red area looks like it only circles the deck.
Yeah, so that, but the page before, so we circled everything that, at the last meeting we requested to circle everything that we thought when we were, that they had to.
Right.
But we also circled, there's several pages we've also circled, the session where all of the answers was added prior to us being out. So when we came here last week, none of that was shown, so we wanted to make sure, as was requested by the board, that we showed you what was there when, when they acquired our services.
Because actually, it's two, two, two sections. One is the one on top of the, and the second floor, and the other one is for the deck.
Oh, so the addition was on top of that little.
Top.
Thing?
Yeah, and the other one is the deck.
Yeah.
They're not the same footprint.
Yeah, and so you've gotten the bottom floor inspected, and so that's where your client lives currently.
Exactly.
Has anything in that area been inspected?
In terms of like the second floor, we, they, they went up when they shut.
I know it was done illegally, but it, you know, is.
We do have the, and I forgot. The affidavit from the, we had an engineer go out to go ahead and look at the space and whether or not it was safe or what have you, and they gave us an affidavit, but I, my error did not bring that.
No, it's gonna be for.
In the original package.
Package, I think it's.
When we, once we were hired, we gave it like higher, so. Because I'm not, what we're not doing is putting our license and our name in jeopardy, and it's one of those things where we've been really actively letting Mr. Urtalo know that we're doing this by the book, or we're walking away. Here's the reason we're here, and the demolition of the basement, and making sure that moving forward, everything will be permitted. If at any point there's any issues where I don't want to do X, Y, and Z, we're removing our name from it. But so far, he is, he is trying to be in compliance, because he hired a licensed contractor. We're doing everything again by the book. We've been in business for over 20 something years, and well, mostly him, because I work for the city, and we're trying to make sure that he isn't compliant. I am someone by the book, I don't, I don't plead the law. And my name is all I have, so I want to make sure I walk away with it intact.
So, so your permit right now is to do the basement and the second floor work?
Yeah.
And in order to get occupancy.
Requested, yeah.
To be inspected.
Exactly, exactly. And that permit is on, is, that request is on hold, and we are submitted an amended proposal for all of the work in terms of what he wants to do in the basement and stuff with Inspection Services. And we've been working with Inspector Donovan and Inspector Keat, for whatever reason, I keep forgetting his last name, and I think we've ever asked Chris enough quite often, but we are just trying to make sure to keep Mr. Urtalo online.
But the, so, the, what you'd be applying for is to keep it as what it currently is, as a single family?
And to.
You couldn't use the, you couldn't live in the part that was added on?
And bring it to compliance.
Well, that's what you're.
Yes, to bring it into compliance, yeah.
The building permits that have been issued.
Have been to correct the wrongs to allow him to live in the first floor.
Yes.
That is what we, we requested permits on, and I think it's on the second page, where you can see the original permit when we first had, hold on, it was, sorry, it was to do the electrical changes or having. What side of the apartment to check the smaller apartment. So those things were like the immediate life safety issues that we needed to address, and that's what, that one permit was requested, but then the other permit is continuously on.
Nice. We already have the application for the other permit for phase two, which is convert the first, the single family into a two-family, and do all the.
The work that is.
The work that's showing in the drawing. It's, but it's just waiting for the approval if it's possible, so we can continue. The last, the last couple of work is.
We do have a copy of it, we didn't put it in there, but it's gonna be uploaded into.
We already have the.
Um, is there any other questions? Can I just ask, is there any concern on the city's part that this does not structurally sound, like the back of this that was added on was done improperly or anything like that?
Nothing we're yet, but you mentioned anything during your report. But hey, what you're looking at, the shed door, that's within the setback, that was added from the. Everything above that. It reached the side. You should be allowed to be with that, and you look at the side now. So, I'd say that should move everything above that. That's. In different periods of time. If it's important to the scale, it should move down that side.
When, when was the most concrete date that we do have a record as the city that we're sure that that was the footprint, and then the change happened? Was that very long ago?
The last instrument, certainly, I think probably around 1947.
Okay.
And then this is your current plan. You can see the difference between the two. This is the photograph, this one listing is from 1980. You can see that shed door then. You want that, that might just tape service in 1980. It should, something that was added, it's a tape service, it's not an instrument. But certainly, my guess is that that was added. It's a significant renovation to multiple. I don't know. Yeah. Actually, we did that.
We, we had.
I submitted the affidavit report, yeah. I submitted it already.
And then Mr. Urtalo from that, I don't remember the date, but he purchased the property maybe about five years or so ago, and I have to go the exact day. But what we circled is what we are aware of by having a meeting with him, and this is what was put, what was on the party.
That was one of my, really, I was paying attention to talking about, or affidavit that comes from the instructor.
All right, so, so you'll be submitting?
Yeah.
You submitted that where you're building?
We did.
All right, so it's, it meets code structure.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Right, see, none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in favor of that is taken out? Anybody against? No other attendees? So what is the wish of the board?
I'm gonna make a motion for grant, stipulation, then we get an updated.
Okay.
And I think we got everything taken care of in this fire and inspection services, so.
Okay, I'll second that. The updated prop, plot plan, just, we have the existing one, it's the new plot plan with the proposed.
Showing the stones and stuff, is that?
Showing the stone wall and showing the, the change on the stairs on the deck.
Okay.
So that is sufficient room for firefighters to get around.
Okay.
To the back of the rear.
Okay.
And I, I'll just say, I think I'm on this case, I'm not gonna vote for it. I, I just don't love, I, I don't like the idea of doing something and then asking for permission after it was in place. I respect the vote, you, I think that you did an excellent job presenting this, and I wish you the best of luck with the permit. I think you'll have the votes, but I just can't support it on that basis.
Fair enough.
All right. And do you have the stipulation then?
Yes, updated plot plan. You can email it to me, then I can.
Oh, okay, we'll do that.
All right, so let's do the roll call for the motion on the table.
Member Gilroy?
Yes.
Members? Remember Christopher?
No.
Remember Maggio?
Yes, with the stipulation.
Member Olson?
Yes, with stipulation.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, with stipulations. All right, take care of that. All right?
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night. So there's nothing else? Um, motion for, any motion to adjourn?
Still, thanks.
All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
All right.